All right. First item on the agenda is to accept or modify the agenda as written.
Mr. Chairman, I will move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed hearing none, motion carries. Next item is community participation. Community participation is a time intended for the public to give input on relevant school issues and not intended to be a question and answer period, as this may be the first time the Board has heard this information. Please do not expect individual responses or any comment by the Board at this time, but be assured that any concerns will be reviewed. Please print your name on the sheet at the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody that would like to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. We'll move on. Consent agenda, do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to reports. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Today is Special Education Day, and I want to thank all the staff that serve our special education students and teachers that work with them on a daily basis and for a great job that they do. I'd also like to announce that Ms. Andrea Stewart, a Warren County High School art teacher, was inducted into the VAEA, Virginia Art Education Association, as a distinguished fellow. This is an honored group of members who have performed extraordinary service to the profession. A virtual ceremony took place during the VAEA Professional Development Conference on November 14th, 2020. I'd also like to announce that, you know, as we have continued to serve our students through this pandemic, we now have, as Mrs. Shepherd informed me earlier today, that 30% of our students are picking up meals on Wednesday. So that's a large number of students coming to pick up meals, and so it's a great service that we're offering there. Also, I'd like to announce that VHSL activities will begin on December 7th, 2020, for winter sports. The VHSL released their guidelines for return to participation, which provides recommendations meant to decrease potential exposure. Along with Governor Ralph Northam's amended executive order 67, there will be a cap of 25 spectators allowed in the gym or at any event. Our goal is to first provide the opportunity for families to watch their children play. Due to the definition of spectator, some families will only receive one ticket. If there are any additional tickets remaining, then those tickets will be distributed to seniors so that an additional parent can attend home games. We will need to rotate spectators in between events so that parents will have the opportunity to watch their child. All home events will also be streamed live, as well so that the community can watch the game from home. So, you know, when you look at a basketball game, you have a JV girls, varsity girls. For that JV girls, we will allow those 25 parents in to watch that JV team, then after that game, we will have to rotate them out, bring in the varsity parents for the number of 25 there. One of the things that VHSL did this year as far as the definition of a spectator was cheerleaders are defined as spectators and not participants. And so they have to be counted in that 25. So we will be having sideline cheer there. We're going to try to limit that to five per game, so that that would be 10 cheerleaders per night, trying to rotate them in for JV to varsity as best as possible. So also, on that same page, with VHSL activities going on, Warren County High School band is planning to march in the parade on Saturday. They will be wearing face coverings when appropriate. They will continue to have the bell covers on their instruments. They did not get fitted for their uniforms this year because that would have required close contact, so they're going to wear a tee shirt. There will be a six-step formation, which will increase the distance between each of the band members to over 10 feet, and this is voluntary. So it's not a requirement. There will not be a grade given. And so it's an opportunity for our students at Warren County High School to also to continue to participate and do some things within the community. Our inclement weather plan for our virtual snow days, one of the things that we looked at and discussed that we will only use a virtual snow day if we can make the call by 12 noon of the previous day. The reason for that is we want to ensure that students will have their devices, be able to take those devices at home. A lot of times when you go into the elementary schools, those devices are in the carts plugged in for use that day, and if they don't take them home, then we want to make sure that students are able to take those home. But also, we want to ensure that we are able to give, you know, that child nutrition has an opportunity to pack meals for breakfast and lunch for that next day or the next two days, however long we think we may be out, so that those students will be able to have meals as well. So during our virtual snow days, you know, we'll have both synchronous and asynchronous instruction. Teachers will have the opportunity to either work from home on those virtual days, or if they need to come in, the buildings are open. I know some of the roads that, you know, especially at the higher elevations can be treacherous, and so, you know, those teachers can make those decisions to, on a virtual snow day, to work from home. You know, if we cannot make the call before 12 o'clock or noon the day before, and we kind of get caught off guard, then that will just be a regular snow day, no virtual instruction. And then we'll just have to make that day up later on. So we just want to be able to do some pre-planning for inclement weather. That way, when we do provide a virtual instruction component, it's going to have substance to it, and that we will also be able to provide meals for our students. CARES3 funding has all been allocated and ordered. That's the one that has the timeline of being spent and put in place by the end of this month. We are still waiting on a couple of things. We have some invoices. We're waiting also on our thermal scanners, the one that we had set up over here for display. Those should be in either this week or next week. But other than that, I know Tim, I was talking to him today, and all of our appliances are in to get us up to the superhighway of the internet here, and so right now we're running at 3 gig, but he's saying that either this week, next week, we will be up to the 10. So we are there, we are ready to go, the appliances are in. It's just getting those things configured to where we can actually use those. Also, from the State Department, they released emergency guidelines for the use of local alternative assessments in lieu of the SOL assessments for this year. Waivers allow school divisions to choose to administer local alternative assessments in lieu of administering the required SOL in Virginia Studies, Civics and Economics, and Grade 8 Writing. And they also gave this year flexibility for the use of the local performance assessment for verified writing credit at the high school level. So we have meetings with groups over the next couple of days to discuss those and to see which direction we need to move. So when they put these in place with these alternative assessments, the students do not even have to attempt the SOL. You can actually put in place this project-based assessment or this other assessment in place of the SOL and then have to report that information in. So they also, within this, for those that, those subject areas that are required for the SOL, they lowered the cut score, and so that will help as well. So there have been some modifications to assessments this year so far that are being pushed out. And we're, of course, right now, we don't have any assessments in the fall or in the winter right now because we're not on a four-by-four. We are year-long, so everybody will be testing in the spring. And that is all I have, sir.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Ballinger.
I do have a question for Dr. Ballinger.
Okay.
You said the sports are going to be live streamed. At what address do we get that? Is that going to be Facebook or?
That will need to come from those two gentlemen back there in the back. They're going to push that out.
Okay.
They, you know, I know Mr. Dyke at Warren County High School, they actually have their equipment already, and he told me they were going to do a test run over the next week or so. And I know Mr. Kupp said that he has two devices that he's still waiting to get installed. And so each system's a little different. I know Mr. Kupp's is through the National Federation of High School, and that is just a website that's tied to that organization, and I'm not sure about Mr. Dyke.
Sportscope.
Huh?
Sportscope.
Sportscope. So, but we will be able, so as we get closer to the events occurring, we will actually send out, and we will post that on our website. We'll send out a press release with the addresses and how to log on, and we will also add that to the main homepage and to each of the school site's pages.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Ballinger. With regard to the virtual snow days, I don't have any argument with that, but won't our students have a device that they can take home with them?
Yes.
So that should preclude the noon thing?
Well, they-
If they take it home every night, do we still have to make a call by noon?
Well, they don't always take them home. Sometimes kids are making sure that they, you know, we need to make sure that those things go home, but also one of the big components is making sure that we have the child nutrition in place. Because if a lot, you know, as I mentioned earlier, 30% are coming in on a Wednesday to pick up food, so we want to make sure that we're still providing that supplemental service with child nutrition, and we needed that time to make sure that we can have our child nutrition prepare that for students to take at home that day.
I would just, you know, hope that we would, like on Fridays or the day before a holiday, because that's when we, a lot of times, get caught is it snows Monday. If we could maybe make an effort to make sure everybody takes them home over the weekend so that if we get bad weather over the weekend, Monday, we could maybe actually roll on.
Yeah, and really, this is more for during the school week. If we get something over the weekend, you know, whether the, it should be common practice that students are taking their Chromebooks home, but I can guarantee you it's probably not. You know, I can guarantee you that a lot of those in-person pre-K-A-K are probably those devices. They're using them in class, they'll take them home sometimes, but probably still 50% or 60% of the time, they're in that case at the school in the cart being charged. Because they're using them in the classroom and on a daily basis, that doesn't necessarily mean they've actually taken them home because it's a little more challenging for those little ones to keep up with that device.
Anything else for Dr. Ballinger before we move on? Thank you, sir. All right. Next up is the School Board. Dr. Perez. Mr. Wells.
None, except to echo the congratulations to Ms. Stewart. She has been doing that for a long time with Warren County Schools, and we appreciate her devotion and to all the special education folks out there, whatever station they have in special education. That is a special calling, and they take it very seriously here in Warren County, and we appreciate everything that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Mr. Rinaldi.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Chairman.
I'll just echo what Mr. Wells said. I agree with everything, and just want to wish everyone a wonderful Christmas and healthy, healthy New Year. I guess this will be our last meeting before the New Year.
It will be long. Possibly. Possibly. Who knows? We'll see. We'll see how the meeting ends. We'll go from there. I can't top you two with what you just, the comments Mr. Wells made and you, I can. I will say that later on this evening, you'll see the generosity of our community, be it businesses and/or individuals, and it's very nice, so. Next up is Mr. Smith, Health Dental Vision Insurance Updates.
Good evening. I have with me this evening Mr. Ed White from McGriff Insurance Services to follow up from a previous meeting that we had a month or so ago, where we looked at our options and so forth, or created some options for ourselves for health insurance. As we're all aware, as a community, as a region, that Valley Health and Anthem had some discussions and so forth with health insurance. We do use Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield as our carrier, and recently, several things occurred. Valley Health and Anthem agreed to a contract, which is very good. And then if you recall from our previous meeting that we had, we were commissioned per se to go out and do RFP to actually find out what that option B could be, and what's out there in regards to insurance for us. So we submitted the RFP, and that on the 30th of November, we received the bid returns. And over the last couple days, Mr. Ed White, myself, we've been going through, Mr. Ballantyne, Dr. Ballinger, we've been going through the proposals that were returned. And you have in front of you, and it will be a document that we will work off of here for the next few minutes in Mr. White's presentation. You'll see on the board that we have up here all the information. However, for some, inclusive of myself, that's kind of difficult to see. So I provided a larger document here that we will be working off of. I do apologize for the timing, perhaps, of the return of this information. However, with the meeting scheduled on the 2nd of December and bids due back on the 30th, this is actually a pretty good effort to get that into your hands, and just so that you are made aware and can look forward at decisions regarding our health insurance. I'm going to ask Mr. Ed White to come up and give his presentation off of our bid returns.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and I got to thank you, Mr. Smith, quite a bit, and Mr. Ballantyne. It's been a pleasure working with them in a very short window of time to pull this off, and they've been invaluable in helping us pull this together. So Chairman and Board members, Superintendent, appreciate the opportunity. So there is a lot here, and I am glad, thank you very much. I came with a very small version of this, and now I don't need my glasses, so thank you for the legend-sized piece of paper. I appreciate that. What I really want to try to do, hopefully in the next, we'll say few minutes, minutes, we'll say, is kind of go through what we've got in hand, what we're looking at, maybe give you some background on what we've seen happen since I last met with you all and kind of told you what our plans was to possibly go out to bid, and then certainly answer questions as we kind of work our way through this. So I guess I'll start by saying, when I last met, you know, we, at that point, some of the school systems, some of the counties were ahead of the game, they were already out to bid, and we were kind of waiting for those bids to come in. What we've seen over the last couple of weeks, and then most recently, of course, with this RFP, was the competition was pretty fierce when it came to companies going after Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield. So you've probably read the paper, Shendow County, Shendow County Schools, they're going with Aetna, City Winchester is going with United Healthcare, I think Clark County is going to be making a move very soon. So there's definitely, while this process was begun as a necessity to look for options because we were afraid we were going to lose our network, and Anthem was going to be non-participating with Valley Health System, I guess I'll say a nice side benefit is that some of these systems have found nice savings in the process, and despite the fact that they could have stayed with Anthem, all of those that I mentioned have said, we're still on the path, there's too much savings to ignore to go back to Anthem at this point. So, and I think you may see that as well when we kind of work our way through this long spreadsheet. So if you look what you have here, in the market size that Warren County Schools is, it's pretty easy for us to do an apples-to-apples comparison. The health insurance marketplace will quote exact benefits. So if you want, you can certainly look at the top half of this spreadsheet, but just know as you work your way across, you're going to see very similar benefits each of the companies have quoted. Those first three columns are the current three benefit plans that the school employees have. You've got three choices, a $250 deductible, a $1,000 deductible, and a $2,000 high deductible health plan that employees choose from. And you can see as you work your way down through those benefits, there's various things. There's copays for doctor visits, copays for inpatient care, copays for emergency room care. And again, we won't, without going into all the detail, what we did is we took those three benefit plans and we went to the marketplace and we said to Aetna and United and Cigna and anyone else that was willing to quote, we want these three plans like we have today, and we want your, obviously, your best rates that you can put on the table. So again, without going in line by line, you're going to see that there is almost a perfect match across the board on the benefits that have been proposed. The companies that did provide health insurance options also provided dental and vision options, and we'll get to those in a second, but the ones that provided true health insurance options were Aetna and United Healthcare. Cigna declined to quote, they just felt as though they couldn't be competitive, as well as Optima, a company down in the Virginia Beach area also declined to quote, they just felt as though they weren't in a competitive place to be here. So if you kind of work your way to the bottom, and I'll just kind of focus first on the current rates, where we're at today with the local choice. You can see, again, the names of the plans are Key Advantage 250, Key Advantage 1,000, and the TLC High Deductible Health Plan. Beneath that are the rates. So for example, the employee-only rate for the Key Advantage 250, which is the richest plan you all have, is $798, okay? That's the rate today. Those rates started beginning October 1st of, well, this year still, and you've only been under that plan really for three months at this point, okay? And if we leave local choice February 1st, you'll have had those benefits and those rates for four months, okay? So if you work your way to the bottom, included in those rates with all three of the plans with the local choice is dental, vision, and medical, of course, okay? So the way the local choice structures the plan is they put all of those benefits together, and you've got one rate with those three components included in it, okay? If you work your way down a little further, what you're going to see is we start working our way across the lines of Aetna and the United Healthcare. We know that the rates that we have today with the local choice are good for, well, from February at least through October. We know that that's normally when you'd get your renewal rates from local choice or from Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, and normally there'd be an increase probably of some amount. But we've kind of run a couple of different scenarios here, just some, I'll say what-ifs. So if you look at the very bottom of those local choice columns, what you're going to see when we work our way across is we've got, the carriers that have quoted have given us 20-month rates, not eight-month rates, not 12-month rates. They've actually locked in the rates that they're going to propose here for 20 months. So we're kind of seeing on the bottom of that local choice column is what would happen if we saw a 3% increase from local choice? Something very modest in the health insurance world. We love increases that are only 3% range. You can see that would add basically another $188,000. If local choice said, well, here's a 6% increase, you can see it adds another $377,000 to kind of that bottom line, to kind of bring them up to what would it look like on a 20-month kind of rolling number. So then again, if we work our way to the Aetna plan, and again, if we just kind of go to the bottom and focus on the rates themselves, what you'll see is a set of rates. Now, what the Aetna and United both do is they don't bundle the dental in, so we've got to add the dental and add the vision back into the rates, so we're making sure we're comparing an apples-to-apples kind of rate structure. So if you kind of work your way down, you'll see there's an additional cost to add dental of around $290,000 with Aetna, and you can see on the following pages the details of how you get to that $290,000. Aetna's vision plan is around $56,000 or $55,983. Aetna also provides a discount if you take their dental and vision, so we're backing that $132,000 back out. Aetna's also providing, and they did this as well at Shendow County and Schools, $100,000 just in case there's a liability when we leave the local choice. That ADEA or that adverse experience adjustment we talked about, that the local choice can come after you for. We don't know what that is, there's no way to know, and we won't know for six full months probably after we leave the local choice. But Aetna's saying, we're going to give you that money if you have it. If you owe it, fine, you can use that $100,000 towards that. If you don't have it, we're still going to give it to you, you can use it towards lowering premiums come October 1st or when you have your normal renewal cycle. So again, just another offset, we want to make sure we reference all the numbers. So again, if you kind of work your way to the bottom of their column, and you say, what would it look like if we're in this plan for 20 months? We know that the Aetna's going to lock those rates in, we're not going to get a renewal increase come October of this year, 2021. We're talking a full 20-month premium, so we'd be talking about roughly $9.1 million over that 20-month period, which is roughly a $1.38 million reduction over what the local choice is today, and assuming we had no increase from the local choice, and we had a zero renewal increase in October of 2021. Again, if you had any kind of an increase, we kind of said, okay, well, if it's 3%, we know we're saving an additional $188,000 and kind of so forth. So I'll take a break there and just see if there's questions related to how we came to these numbers before we dig into maybe the dental and the vision and the other pieces.
My only question is, Mr. White, obviously the rates are better with Aetna when you look at the first page. Then you add in the dental and the vision. We only have a vision page, or at least-
It's on the back, I think.
On the very back. I never flipped it over.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank Mr. Smith.
I was trying to really compare. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely. Looking out for us. So when you add all that up, and I didn't get the chance, it was cheaper when you added the vision, but it's going to be close, isn't it? When you add another $32 on, five, that's 55. No, it's not.
No, you're still sizable. I mean, again, we're working on totals. We can build those rates if you wanted to see what they look like with the, you know, the 582 plus the employee-only dental, plus the employee-only vision with, and ultimately, that's what you would do before you rolled this out to the employees. We were just kind of working with totals so you could kind of get a feel for bottom-line savings.
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
If you're educating, we're the best.
All right, well, let's, we'll keep going then. We certainly have some other pieces to cover. Okay.
Have you by any chance checked with Valley Health to see if Aetna, if their physician network and everything is fully covered, and I guess since we're doing it as separate pieces, the vision and dental, do most of the practitioners accept Aetna?
Yes.
We're not jumping out of the situation.
Right, out of the, yeah, and into our situation, yeah. No, what I would, and we were talking about this earlier today, with Aetna and United Healthcare both, you've probably got about a 97% overlap with Aetna's network. To give you some perspective, too, the employees of Valley Health carry Aetna cards, so there's already tremendously large membership in the area, and the doctors know who they are.
So do the cards.
Right. So a couple of things that, and again, we can talk about United Healthcare. You can see they were competitive, just not nearly in the ballpark of competitiveness that Aetna was overall, so we can spend time on them, I don't know that we need to. Again, good network, good coverage, basically matching your current benefits. Aetna has offered to, for starters, give everyone credit that's met any portion of their deductible. Your deductibles today with the local choice start fresh every October, so we know there's folks that have met some portion of these deductibles between October and what would be February 1st effective date, those four months. If they have met any portion or their tenants have met any portion of that deductible, Aetna's going to take a report from Anthem and give them credit, so they won't be starting over, which is important. We don't want folks, same with their maximum amount of pockets, so those coinsurances and the copays and the deductibles that count towards that maximum amount of pocket, as you can see on that top part of those charts, they'll give them credit for that as well. So we won't be, nobody will be starting fresh with a deductible just because we're having to move, or potentially moving plans in the middle of the year. The one area I told Mr. Ballantyne and Mr. Smith several times, it hadn't kept me up at night, but it's- it's, it hadn't kept me up at night, but it's certainly the one area that I wanted to focus on when we started this process is your retirees. And when I say retirees, I'm talking about your post-65 retirees. You've got two sets, I guess, of retirees. You've got early retirees that can that can stay on the plan if they meet certain criteria. Those will be covered under these active plans like we have here. You've also got a population of employees that have retired and are over the age of 65. And the local choice offers a plan. It's basically a Medicare supplement, kind of a modified Medicare supplement plan. The school system contributes nothing towards it. So it's kind of more of an endorsed plan. We, they just say, hey, if you want it, you can have it. It's money that's going to come out of your personal checking account. We don't pay for this. You'll you'll pay basically Anthem directly for that Medicare supplement plan. Aetna has a plan similar to that. I, there's part of me that thinks so. We've talked a good bit about it, that it might be a good idea to even bring in a company that could sit down one-on-one. There's a company in Winchester, Virginia called Creekside that already has a lot of your retirees that didn't take the local choice plan, that can really help navigate those folks, sit down with them one-on-one and help them kind of understand their options when it comes to Medicare supplements. And probably in most cases, they're all going to find that they they can save money over the local choice plan that they have today. That's one alternative. We can certainly do the same thing you've got today with the local choice and and give them your product and say, here's our, you know, similar product that looks just like what we have with the local choice. I want to make sure those folks, because they're they don't have access, obviously, to meetings like this, although we can certainly have meetings one-on-one with them and or in kind of group sessions, I want to make sure those folks are comfortable because that plan will go away, too. And they'll need to have a place to land February 1st. They've got access to the whole marketplace, and you see the ads on TV today, they can certainly take advantage of. But but if they want help and they want some handholding, we want to make sure we've got a place for them as well.
The December 7th deadline doesn't affect that?
It won't if you, if if their plan that they're on is terminated, it kind of, it's kind of a special open enrollment for them, too. If they wanted to do something directly with Medicare.gov, they could. Or one of the, any one of the companies you see on TV advertising their their products.
What kind of number are we talking about?
Number of retirees of 65-plus is 30 individuals, I believe, with 35 total people on there.
So they're they're not even in these numbers because we knew that they're, school doesn't pay anything towards the cost. It's it's just a plan that's that's endorsed.
And for a plan such as that, if we were to be able to to assist them with a third-party person, as Mr. White said, that would be something that we would want to start fairly soon, just simply because, you know, switching those type of things, we're we're traditional in nature and conservative in nature, and we ain't going in something that we feel comfortable and good about. And sometimes we just have to make sure that we go through the process of being able to say, there are other things out there, very similar, if not better than what you're receiving. And here's the place that you would go to, but yet to be able to set up those meetings for those individuals to feel comfortable in that conversation that they would have. So they would feel in February that they have as good of a plan as they currently have, if not better.
I've spoken to a couple of individuals, and a couple of them have already set up appointments with Creekside.
Oh, have they? Okay.
And it's, as I explained to them, we're kind of at crossroads. We've, over the years, we've discussed, you know, moving away from Anthem. It's just that, like Buck says, we we get familiar with the product. It's good product.
Yep.
It's it's served our employees very well and everything. It's just the whole idea of, do I really want to switch? But.
It ends, there's no question.
Particularly if they've got an opportunity to to themselves get a good plan and say.
Yeah. And and it it really opens the door. I mean, again, a lot of them probably have already navigated the process. It sounds like a lot have because there's only 30 or so folks that are that are on this retiree plan. While they can take a plan very similar, Creekside kind of navigates them that way, there's also, you see the ads on TV. I've helped my my mom through Creekside navigate to a Medicare Advantage plan. Her premiums are zero, and it includes prescription drug coverage. So there is, again, it kind of opens the door to them being able to pursue a lot of different options. Yeah. So the beyond that, the, again, this is, this is the medical page, and certainly pulls in the full, the full dental and vision premium. We did, the RFP included requests for quotes for vision, which we'll talk about first, since it's the next page behind that. Again, the same companies that quoted medical, quoted vision, and we even had a couple of side companies that don't even do medical insurance, like Emeritus and Guardian, that quoted vision as well. It's hard to probably, in some respects, turn away from the discount that 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 Aetna's offering. Remember, on the previous page, the discount for bundling the dental and the vision together with their coverage, they give you a sizable discount. Their while their their vision rate is okay, you can see, and it basically is better than your current coverage today in a lot of respects for the eye exam copay, for example, for the allowance for contact lenses or eyeglasses or lenses. It's really better across the board than what the local choice plan has today. It's using the same network IMed that the local choice uses as well. And this rate guarantee for the vision plan is actually four years. It's it's an incredibly long period of time. So it's a little higher than some of the others, you can see. But but if you said we didn't want Aetna's vision, then we'd be giving up some of that discount that they're offering to bundle the product. Any questions on the vision? A little little easier coverage, certainly lower expense coverage. So the last piece, and again, that that total that you saw at the bottom of the vision for Aetna is what we pulled into that first page, so you can see where that 56,000 came from. On the dental plan, again, you can see, Aetna's competitive here. You know, they're probably in the middle of the pack at 290,000 in total. Pretty much the same benefits as what the employees have today with local choice. It's unique, the local choice, it's not Anthem Dental, it's Delta Dental. So that's packaged in or bundled in is the is the Delta Dental program. Aetna would use their network. And what we tell folks is, you know, dental is not like medical. You know, don't switch dentists just because your dentist isn't in the network. There's no, there's no reduction in benefits for going out of network on the dental side like there is kind of for medical, traditional medical. So we just say, go to your dentist, and Aetna will pay that dentist, whether they participate or not, the same amount of money. If they happen to participate, great. They have to accept the allowable charge. If they don't, they could charge you the difference if they choose to. So again, easy stuff, easy coverage to to kind of match. The one thing I will mention, and I'm probably at the top quarter of the page, if you see out of network, some of that's insurance terminology, but in and out of network situation today with Delta Dental, Delta's fee structure is down here, I guess I'll, to put it bluntly. So doctor may charge $180 for cleanings and x-rays. Delta, if you go out of network and you don't go to participating Delta dentist, they'll probably approve somewhere around, let's say, $120. They have a pretty low fee structure when you don't go to participating providers. Aetna and most of the other companies on here, and that's what we call the 90th percentile, have a much higher fee structure. So if you go to a non-participating Aetna dentist, they're probably going to prove much more than that 120. It'll probably be much closer to that full $180 that the dentist has charged. So it prevents some of that balance billing difference, which is a good thing. It's, again, it's kind of a nice side benefit of of the way Aetna does their out-of-network reimbursements on the dental side.
Do you know, do you know where orthodontia falls? Does it fall under dental or does it fall under medical?
It falls under dental. So if you, if it's, yeah, it's about halfway down the page. 50% coverage.
Yeah, 15%.
Okay.
For mine on the.
Yep. Right. That's the max. And if you want to see the benefit, just go a little further down, and you can see how it's covered.
Right.
Anything else that I missed? We covered a lot, I know, today, but.
Do we have an outlier? If if we made the decision to go with Aetna, how quickly they could get everything turned around? I think they pretty much guarantee, as much as you can guarantee in the business world, that all of our folks will be ready to go February 1st.
Yeah. I mean, it's, they're, they're in the process of doing all those same things for Shendong County, which is going to be January 1st. So absolutely, they're, what we've kind of set in motion, and I may have mentioned this last time we met, is what what our plan to do is to take a census file from Anthem. We, Anthem will provide it to us. It'll show all the employees, all their dependents, which of the three plans they're under, their dates of birth, their address, all that important information. And we're going to give that in a, basically, an Excel file. If we choose Aetna to Aetna, and they'll upload it. We don't need to have the employees fill out paperwork. We're really not even planning on doing open enrollment because we're not changing, we're not increasing the rates by any means. We're not changing the benefits. We're just going to say, we're mapping you to the same kind of plan you've got today. Instead of it being an Anthem plan, it's now going to be an Aetna plan, for example. And that'll be the plan you'll have. We'll do a traditional open enrollment like we always do in October or in August and September for an October 1st effective. The rates won't change because we know we're already at 20-month rates. But but then you'll have the opportunity, if you want to make changes like you normally would, at a normal open enrollment period. But we, it is the one reason, though, as we talked about, that's, those are easy. We know how we're going to map those folks to their new plans. The retirees are the folks that make us want to start this process as soon as we can, just because we know they're going to be one-on-one handholding through the process.
Will there be a presentation at each school for the faculty and and staff?
We we kind of set it open to whatever we want, whatever the school system decides that they want to have. Aetna was more than willing to be part of that. We can also do, we're doing a good bit of recorded meetings. So it's basically PowerPoint presentations with audio, kind of running through slides to talk through the benefits and the network, and telling folks, you know, there's nothing you need to do, but this is how it's going to work, and you should, you will have your ID cards well in advance of February 1st. If you're on a mail order prescription, here's how you get that mail order moved over to the new company. Walking them through, basically, what we would normally do with a traditional, a group that's leaving, one carrier and going to another carrier. Absolutely. And if if the school system wants one-on-one meeting, or not one-on-one, but group meetings in whatever setting, we're happy to do those. Absolutely.
And Aetna has a current contract that's at least 20 months.
They do. Great question. We, you know, that was one of the first questions I I did go to the hospital and then say, you know, we know where we are with Anthem. We don't want to be out of one, you know, bad situation into another one because you're negotiating with some other carrier in the following year, and they promised me this Anthem is the only one, and the next ones aren't for a long, long time. So, and they said, and we talked about it last time, Anthem was their lowest payer, what they really wanted. And I assume that's probably part of the reason that the deal was finally done yesterday or announced yesterday, is Anthem's paying them something more than they were before. Which I think is part of the reason, too, is we look at, you know, future rate increases. It's hard to say what what impact that will have, but we know now for sure that Anthem's going to be paying the hospital more for services, everything that that the hospital might do. It does concern me that that will trickle into higher premiums eventually, whether it be in October or down the road. So it is, it's, money in the bank's probably the wrong term, but but to have 20-month rates in in the world that I live in, in health insurance world, is almost unseen. We don't, and we can't get more than 12 months in many cases. The carriers just don't want to do it. So there's, they've, the carriers, as I said when I started, they've, they've been very aggressive. They see this as an opportunity. And I think they know that the the easy thing would have been to put eight-month rate on the table and say, here's our really competitive rate for eight months, knowing that in October they could, they could pass along an increase that would be unacceptable. So if 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 any of these companies have bought the business, they're on the hook for a long period of time, and they're going to lose a lot of money. I guess is the best way to put it.
Do you think, Mr. White, the reason they they threw that out there at 20 months and and a substantial decrease of what we're paying? One, to buy the business, of course. But two, do you think they feel healthcare is going to be flat for the next few years? And so they're kind of rolling the dice, but maybe not, because I know they have all kinds of data.
Data, yeah. That's a good point. And I would say there's probably a lot of validity to that. I think, you know, if we were talking in July of this year, I'd say, you know, some someday soon, there's going to be a spike. All that pent-up care that wasn't happening, the knee replacements and the stuff that people were putting off, was going to hit us come fall or come come winter. And and of course, that hadn't happened, and now we're talking about, you know, further shutdowns and lockdowns. I don't think we're going to see the spike. I don't think we're going to have the the springback effect that that maybe we thought two or three or four months ago. And and I do think, that's a good point, that some of the the carriers and the underwriters that are actually putting these rates on the table are saying, we don't think 2021 is really going to be a whole lot different potentially than 2020 was. And there's no question, their 2020 claims are suppressed. You've got your big ones, your occasional COVID claim, but by and far, the insurance companies have have had a good year, have had a good year.
All right. Thank you. Is the only way for the next couple of years they're going to increase?
Yes.
I don't have anything else, Mr. White. Mr. Smith, I'll put you on the spot, though. I mean, I know you got this like yesterday, and and you and Mr. Valentine and Mr. White and Dr. Ballinger have been looking over in great depth and detail. You see any shortcomings that we're not seeing? I mean, throw it out there to me.
Initially, yeah. Initially, on the surface, no. We we do need, I think, some time for a little bit of digestion here on some of some of this information and those type of things to look at. There will be questions that will come up. Sometimes it's like on that job interview, they are, they ask you, do you have any other questions or those type of things? And at that moment, you may think to yourself, I really don't have anything other than, you know, what I've asked. And then you drive your car down the road to your house, and you think of two or three other things that you wish you had asked during that time. And I think this is very similar to that, is that I would like, it would be helpful as well for myself to start to look in just front wheel in general and run some type of report of some sort of who, which facilities or physicians and so forth initially have have Aetna. We know that the percentage across the board is is very good, but it'd be good just to see where those pockets are, perhaps, those type of things. On the surface, obviously, you're comparing apples to apples.
Yeah.
You're looking at being able to provide the same service for less cost. And that's a two-way cost. It's a cost for the employee, or savings for the employee, is also a savings for the employer, because we make that contribution. To the rates that he was referring to earlier, I think Mr. White had mentioned with local choice for that individual, it's like 768 or $58 and those type of things. That's for the entire, that's for the whole plan for that person. We provide what's called a contribution for that. And that contribution is roughly 600 or so dollars. So that plan for the employee is $157. So when you look at some of those other plans that perhaps Aetna has and those type of things, and you see that difference, that's part of the savings. I think at first, we may need to be a little bit careful how we kind of spread that out, because really, you're playing with some future money there, the future money that you're having there with savings. But on the surface of what I've seen within 24, 28 hours, it it seems very comparable. It is something across the board that we're seeing in other divisions and other county agencies and so forth moving forward. I don't think that everyone has 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 kept blinders on through this process. I think they're starting to see that there are savings here. I think through this process, we'll have a line behind us of other agencies and organizations that will probably be doing the same things, some, very similar.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I I do agree. I mean, at first glance, Jeff, an approval of what we have in place, but we need to digest it.
Well, and I think the one thing that that's favorable about the 20-month is that gentleman sitting over there, when it comes to budget time, it's, it's always, he has to leave a lot of open spaces or make a lot of suppositions or possibilities. What if, what if our insurance goes up? And if we could go into what's going to be a tough '21 budget year and know that stuff's off to the side and it's already fixed, it would be a marvelous advantage, particularly if it's, if it works out that it's better for our employees as well.
I can see the smile. I can see the smile behind him.
I think over the years, we've, we've had Blue Cross Blue Shield for, long before I was here, for for a long, long time and those type of things. We've been satisfied. I think what you're seeing here is an example of competition. Sometimes there's complacency that sets in on both parts, whether it be the person receiving the service or whether it be the person providing the service. And if I'm always know I'm going to get the same thing, then I may just continue to offer the same rates and those type of things. But the situation that occurred with Valley Health and Anthem, to some degree, sort of opened the door for other people to be more aggressive on their competitiveness. And I think those results that you're seeing here is just a perfect example. Aetna's basically saying, I want to be more predominant in your area. I want to provide services. And and in doing so, they've not only said that to us, they've said that to other divisions. So.
I'm thinking about Shendong County Public Schools are realizing 5% benefit? Is that 10%?
I don't recall exactly, but I know that they are receiving, I know it's. I don't recall exactly, but I know that they are receiving, I know it's beneficial to them. I think their government organization as well as their school system, I believe, went in that direction.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much. Approval of Warren County Public Schools Athletic Handbook, Mr. Cupp and Mr. Dyke, please.
About a month or so ago, Dr. Ballinger got all the principals and the ADs from both high schools and both middle schools together and said he wanted one, one plan, you know, for student athlete handbook. We talked about it with all the people and then he gave us the arduous task of myself and my cohort from across another part of town to fight it out and figure out what we could come up with and you guys have what we have. It was actually fairly easy. We're pretty much on the same page. There was a couple of things that we've added and cleared up. One of the first being on page two at the top, each athlete must have a physical before they start any sort of workouts preseason, which has not been the case. Most of the schools in the area have that and it's a liability to not. Sometimes kid has asthma, we don't know about it, something like that. So this was just something that we had and we thought was pretty important. We cleaned up the tobacco and alcohol issues that we have in here for first-time offenders and second-time offenders. We also cleaned up the hazing, which is on page three at the top, just to make sure that that was squared away. And pretty much, we just kind of put everything together and this is what you got and everybody's doing the same thing. And that was the, what he wanted us to do, so we did it. And it really wasn't that arduous. It's fun working with him. Really is. But as I was saying, you have a copy of this and you've had a copy for a couple of weeks. So if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to field those.
Got a question, just a comment. It's nice to see the handbook is very easy to read, very easy to understand, and it fits all of our schools. So thank you both for what you've done.
And my only issue is it's awfully small in print. Did you notice the same thing?
No, hell, this computer, you're going to break this meal.
No, it was, it was great. It worked out real well.
It did. It really did.
And ask you your question, I've got both of my wrestling matches going to be on the, well, I knew that, I knew where you were getting at the question. So.
Well, just kind of to follow up with Mr. Dyke, like you said, we, we've always had a handbook for as long as I've been here. This was just a way to kind of get it all together and make sure that we had the exact same things, which we were probably about 95% the same, but there were some things that we were looking at interpreting differently. So it was an opportunity to get our rules as one, as a county. And we also tried to incorporate more so than we had in the past in middle school athletics and incorporate them in more and get them a path too. That wasn't always the case. Like he was saying, it's, you know, and the answer wise, it's smaller. There's a lot of information in there and every kid will get a copy by paper, so that's a lot of extra paper. It still prints out about four or five papers, the way it is now.
Any other questions or comments?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. I got a question on the upcoming seasons that we're getting ready to get into.
Just to make sure that the public knows how they can view things online.
As Dr. Ballinger said, once we have like the links of you on our school websites, on our social media, like through our school's Twitter accounts, Facebook accounts, and we'll get that out through the parents, through the schools emails, we'll do the best we can. Obviously, it's probably going to be, you know, it's going to take a lot of community involvement to get the word out to where to find us. We'll do everything we can. I know I have, and I'm sure Mr. Dyke has also been contacted by our local media, press media to answer us questions about how this is going to work. So we'll be getting that information out through them as well.
Finally figured out how to navigate track wrestling and now I'm going to have to change that.
I appreciate that issue too, but like I know, for example, since you do attend wrestling matches, we're supposed to host regions and we're going to have to split it up into two days and do the lower weights one day and the upper weights the next, just because of the social distancing thing and having to clean the mats. So they're turning a, you know, a one, one day or so tournament into a two-dayer, but it'll be interesting. And that'll also be streamed out, so.
You can't do it at both schools?
Well, we're.
Well, we could, but you're going to have to split your coaches up also. We've, you know, about all we've got done in the last couple of months is make a plan and then change the plan and then change that plan and then change that plan, so.
I will throw something out to you both. And I think it was two, maybe three years ago at one of our meetings down in Williamsburg, there was a company there that had a camera system that you could stream anywhere you wanted. And it would mount in a gym or a ball field. I saw the presentation, it was really impressive. I mean, really impressive. And the gentleman that runs the VHS, he, he had it in some schools he had been to. So I wish I could remember the name of it. I'll try to look and find it. I don't know.
Pixlock?
Yeah, I think it is.
It's mostly, it's most likely.
Yeah, I think that is it. That was quite impressive. Of course, it was very pricey.
That is the system that I am installing. It'll be.
Are you?
It won't be, unfortunately, there's such a high demand for it right now.
Right.
That their installers are behind. I would probably not have it installed for the first couple of games. Once it is installed, it is a, from what I've spoken with people about and what I've seen, it is a great system. It's automated, so all I have to do is go in and program the computer to tell it when to come on and then how it works is above my knowledge level, but it has algorithms in it and as the dog goes up and down the corner, the camera will follow it. So it's a tremendous system. As a fan, you, it's kind of like, you know, kind of a Netflix type e-biz subscription. Any school in the country that has this system, you can watch their games. So where it would be nice for as a fan or parent, if, you know, we have it, you watch our home events, I know like the Shandor County Schools are working on getting it in. And so if we're playing at Central, then you can tune in and watch that also. So it's a, that's some of the benefits of the system, but you are correct, it is not cheap.
And see, mines are grab and go. We're, because I'm working with my sports management class, Mr. Gardner and his Deca crew and all that. And ours, you can take out and move it to wherever you want it to go. So like, we're talking about wrestling, if we do one in the main gym and one in the gym, the auxiliary gym, I can have a camera in both spots. So it's portable. I can take it on if we have a region game away, I can take it with me down there. And so the kids are going to be doing the announcing and they're going to be doing stuff like that, so it's going to be interesting.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Another challenge, what the heck.
Hey, there you go.
What the heck.
What's the old saying? Winners never win, winners never quit.
Yeah.
So there you go.
We just keep working.
There you go. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the proposed Warren County Public Schools Athletic Handbook be approved as presented this evening.
I'll second that.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, hearing none, motion carries. Acceptance of donation, Mr. Johnston.
Hey, all, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak in front of you and I want to thank Dr. Ballinger for inviting me, me to do so. I want to talk to you a little bit about our Fall Festival that we had here on November 17th. Basically, this was a collaborative event between E. Wilson Morrison, reaching out now, Skyline High School and Skyline Middle School. It started in, in Skyline Middle School's, one of Skyline Middle School's meetings. And the donation part comes in two parts, actually. It's part of our Harvest Festival and it's part of our FFA, just to, not to jump ahead too far myself. But all, all four of these organizations came together to make the Harvest Festival possible. The purpose of our Harvest Festival was to get to see our kids. That was one of the first things. We hadn't seen a lot of them. We wanted to get them out, get them out into the community and still respect social distancing, still respect, you know, mask guidelines and everything like that. And we also needed a way to collect food to still serve our community. So those two things came together and we said, hey, what can we do to help? This was a drive-through event. So basically, the way that it was set up is that there was 12 different stations around Skyline Middle School and those stations ranged from a donation station to candy stations to apples, to free books, to health information, anything and anything that we could get donated from the community. And this community was so gracious in what they gave us, snack cakes even. So the results were over 500 food items were donated. We had one family that came and dropped off a whole meal, turkey and all to us. So 23 families were able to be fed at Thanksgiving and we still have more food that we're able to use for, for the winter holiday as well. So just, just great. We had so much help. This, this food effort goes over 38 years and stems from Mr. Mike Whitehouse who started it, I believe he started it. You know, back, we were still, my building was still Warren County Middle School and Ashley Woods took that over. And I want to say thank you to Mr. Goodwin who helped out, Skyline High School's administration and all the, all the staffs and, and Skyline Middle School staff who helped stuff all of this stuff into bags. And of course, Sam Barber from Ron and Dr. Michelle Edwards from SMS, the assistant principal there, helped to, those two last individuals helped call all the people on this list to help sponsor. So the Virginia Soybean Association gave coloring books and lip balm and all those dental groups, so Virginia Royal Dental and Virginia Dental Health and All Smiles Dentistry. Dr. Zunka gave toothbrushes and toothpaste and IHOP gave crayons. KFC and Arby's, $500 each. Hershey's gave so much candy. We had so much candy. And Little Debbie snack cakes gave. And McDonald's, we had about 1,000 food cards from McDonald's. Target $100 gift card. Warren Coalition gave apples and stress balls. Green Valley Book Fair gave us discounts on 453 books that we were able to give out to our students as they came through. And that was, those were K-12 students that came, came through as well. So the Lympton, excuse me, the Lympton United Methodist Church gave $500 worth of Starbucks gift cards. And Mark and Miller gave some pumpkins and corn stocks for donations. And Cargill gave us 50 turkeys. So just, just great, great giving from, from the community. In addition to those donations, the FFA got donations and the FFA is a student-led organization dedicated to making a positive difference in the lives of students by developing their potential for premier leadership, personal growth, and career success through agricultural education. Our FFA chapters were created in 2018 and since the creation of our FFA chapters, our middle school programs have grown tremendously. Of course, this year is tremendously different and although we're not in person, we wanted to seek to still reach out and connect with our kids. And so this year's FFA plans to send home one take-home meeting kit per month and have each student be able to complete that over our virtual platforms. And of course, we also want to do career development events and leadership development events as well. Ms. Roy, our Skyline Middle School and Warren County Middle School's agricultural teacher knew that this was going to take a lot of help from our community to try to get all this together. And it, again, it's, we were blown away with all the community support. We had $2,495 donated in this effort. And so those individuals were Mr. and Mrs. Matthew McKay gave $900. Mr. and Mrs. William Klein gave 250. Ms. Amy Strohsneider gave 100. Mr. and Mrs. Robert Lennon gave 150. The Apple House gave 100. Buttonwood Wealth gave 200. Warren County Farm Bureau gave 200. Mid-Atlantic Farm Credit gave 300. Ramsey's gave 130. Morrison Enterprises gave 150. And Orndorf Plumbing gave 15. And all of those donations will be used to cover dues for the students. They'll be used to sponsor 10 FFA jackets for students who are in need. They'll be used to pay for those monthly kits that will go home to students to help them keep interactive. And also the awards that students get from those leadership trainings that they get as well. So that's, that's, that's all those donations. It's great to have the community that supports Skyline Middle School and the kids so, so well. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know they were having this Fall Festival the evening or the afternoon of our last school board meeting and I quickly drove through half of it just to see what it was all about. It seemed to be very well, very well-run and attended.
Yeah, it was. It was, a lot of people came through. It was a little cold, snow, everything on that.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have a motion.
I move the donations on the attached list to the Skyline Middle School's FFA program and Fall Festival be accepted with gratitude.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, hearing none, motion carries. Approval of 2021, 2022 school calendar, Ms. Shepherd.
Good evening. Thank you. Policy I C I D requires the school board to establish the division's calendar in accordance with applicable regulations and to include contingencies for making up teacher days and teaching hours missed for emergency situation. The first reading of the proposed calendar was November the 4th. The second reading and discussion was November the 17th and the recommendation for approval is tonight. You've had three opportunities to look at this calendar now. For the 2020, for the 2021, 2022 school year, school would start August the 10th. The last day of school would be June the 9th. We have six built-in weather makeup days. Students will not be in school for more than 180 days. So if we do not miss six days due to weather, the time will be taken off at the end of the school year. And there are 13 built-in professional days. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments? Motion?
I move the proposed 2021, 2022 school calendar be approved as presented. The first day of school will be Tuesday, August 10th, 2021, and the last day of school will be Thursday, June 9th, 2022.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Shepherd. Acceptance of donations, Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lympton United Methodist Church has donated $500 to AS Rhodes Elementary School and $550 to Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School for students in need.
Good. Very nice. Motion?
I move the donations of $500 to AS Rhodes Elementary School and to $550 to Leslie Fox Kaiser Elementary School, both by Lympton United Methodist Church, be accepted with gratitude.
I'll second it.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Pose, hearing none, motion carries. Set a date and time for 2021 organizational meeting, Dr. Ballinger.
Warren County School Board policy, BCA, school board organizational meeting requires that an organizational meeting be held in January of each year. One of the actions to be taken at the meeting is to establish the regular meeting schedule for that year. Following current practice, it is recommended that this meeting be scheduled for Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
Questions?
Don't see any reason to fret. It's not an election year, change over years. I see no reason to tag it any sooner than our regularly scheduled meeting. So therefore, I would move that the 2021 organizational meeting be held on Wednesday, January 6th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the board meeting room of the Warren County Government Center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Request to schedule a special meeting, Dr. Ballinger.
So depending upon the outcome of the health, dental, and vision insurance discussion earlier this evening, it may be necessary to schedule a special meeting later this month to take action on changing insurance providers effective February 1st, 2021. We've provided two dates. One is December 9th, the other is December 16th. The December 9th, if you are wanting to look at changing insurance companies, the December 9th, next Wednesday, would actually increase the link and time that we can, can help with our retirees that, with, with insurance, if you're wanting to make that move, it just gives us more time. So, you know, we, we do need to make a decision at some point on the insurance, whether we want to make the change or if we want to go ahead and rescind our, our letter from Anthem.
Dr. Ballinger, we kind of asked around, and everybody said December the 9th at 5:00 PM would work for them, because we need to digest what we were presenting tonight. You guys will have more time, but yet, if we do move, we'll have more time to educate everybody, so.
Yes, sir.
December the 9th, I believe, I would just take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that a special meeting be scheduled for Wednesday, December 9th, 2020, at 5:00 PM at the meeting room at Diversified.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Saying nothing for the board, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.